So I called over the March 14th. Planning Commission Subdivision Committee Special Meeting. Roll call?
I can do that. Michelle's out today, so we've got Chair Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Self-Ficanic.
Close enough.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Colte.
The sixes.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Gross. And Commissioner Lo.
Here.
All right. And then we just jump right into the discussion. Study session for zoning code update. And now I will leave it to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Commission members, as we continue to venture through this effort, we appreciate your time. There's a lot of information here, and I know that you all want to have that opportunity to fully review and discuss and provide feedback to staff and our consultant team. So we're certainly here for that. I know that today we, tonight, we did furnish you a comparative set of tables and definitions. And I think Commissioner DeBolt, he mentioned that he really wanted to see that direct comparative. And that was our, you know, our intent is to make sure we're fully transparent on all of this. And I realize that you just received that. But we'd like to have that chance tonight to go through this portion of the code and have a chance to discuss with you, answer any questions you have, and hopefully provide the feedback we need to bring this to the next level in preparing it for public hearing at the appropriate time. So with that, we have our consultant team here, and I'll pass it, well, before I pass it on, I also want to mention too that, again, we want to also remind you that the intent of this, when we started off in hiring MIG and going forward with this, was really to ensure consistency with the general plan, the update that occurred back in 2015, I believe. And we're still focused on that. We have added a few additional items above and beyond that, that you'll see. Our sign code, for example, we made some additional changes and adjustments to ensure we're consistent now with federal law, because there were some federal provisions that changed here a few years ago. And then also they're looking at the parking. For, I think, a few meetings back, there was conversation and direction given to please take a look at the parking, even though those amendments occurred recently, but wanted to have our consultant team take a look at that and provide that feedback back to you. But I just want to remind you that really the, we're not, we're really focused on an issue of consistency with the general plan. That's the primary reason that we're going through this exercise, and just wanted to mention that to you. And with that, we'll pass it off to our consultant team.
Thanks, Les. And a couple of other things, Mr. Chairman, that we wanted to point out with regard to the focus of the update was not just to achieve general plan consistency and make sure that the code is up to snup with current law, but that an effort was, is being put forward to make the code easier to use, to organize tables better, to make sure that the information's absolutely clear. In terms of the use tables, the direction was to make sure that the code is going to be able to attract the businesses in the right zones that Los Alamos is looking to attract, and then also to ensure the high quality of development the city is looking to achieve. So those were other, these are other objectives of the comprehensive code update in addition to the general plan consistency. Keep in mind, this is a work in process still. That's why we're working with you as part of these study sessions. The use table did have a pretty thorough going over when we presented it to the ad hoc committee. And so that goes back probably nine months or so ago, when we brought the use table for the commercial and industrial uses to the committee. And we fine tuned it a little bit since then based on that direction, but I just wanted to make sure that we provided that background before we get into the study session this evening. We didn't have any formal presentation or method of going through the revisions. They were provided to you three or four weeks ago prior to the study session in late February, and we didn't get a chance to really get through much of anything. And so what we really wanted to do was to be able to respond to any questions that you may have had based on your review as to why some changes have been made, or why something might not be there that you would hope to see there. And so that's really, the focus of the workshop tonight is to listen to you and to get feedback on what you would like to see addressed appropriately in the code. And again, we were focusing tonight on Chapter Two, which, and the definitions, which are the zones, the use regulations, and the development standards for each of the zones. Something that I did want to mention with regard to the definitions, the current definitions in the code, in today's code, aren't complete. So anything that you might find in the use table might not necessarily be defined in definitions, and that creates some issues for, I think, somebody coming in and wanting to know whether or not a particular use, what it is that they're trying to propose, is it defined in the code? And so we very meticulously made sure that if it's in the use table, it's in the definitions, and there's a good definition so that staff can hang their hat on that when somebody comes in with a proposed use. So that's why you'll see that the red line version of the definitions bleeds red, it's because we added a lot of things that weren't there today. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you'd like to go commissioner by commissioner, or how you'd like to make sure that we cover all the issues that are of importance to you tonight.
I'll kind of defer to you on that. I thought at the last meeting you had kind of a plan to go through some of the changes and things.
We did in just a general sense, as part of the brief presentation that I just made, but I think that there's a lot of detail in there, and our hope was that if the commissioners had a particular issue that they wanted to discuss, that we would do that and be prepared to discuss that.
Okay. I mean, I think I brought up a couple of things at the last meeting. I'm fairly confident Art was probably going to have some questions about some things, so maybe we start there.
Yeah. Yeah, I started looking through the material, but I asked for it again, because I left everything in the book. That's why I got this, we got this back. And I started going through the tables and, that was provided to us, and I didn't see, I didn't see some of the language that we had in our, you know, in the current code. Okay? And so I'm looking for the deletions. All right? We have deletions, you know, what was provided to us, for example, the stuff that's been changed is noted out there, which is great, and I'm kind of following that. But then, when I got into the numbers, the numerical values for density, lot size, this type of a thing, there were no deletions. I assumed everything was, is remaining the same. Okay? Which was a erroneous assumption. So I, you know, I went online and I brought up our current code, and I'm looking in particular, this is at Table 2.03. I mean, it's probably the easiest one to get where I'm going. And that's on page 29. Well, let's see, on what was given to us, but, so anyway, and I'll just go through some of the changes that I certainly don't recall discussing. And if we discussed it, then I apologize, because my memory is failing me. For example, in the R2 zone, our current code allows for a parcel area of 9,000 square feet, and the proposed is now 6,000 feet, square feet. On the R2 zone, going farther down, interior lot widths, or parcel width, is being proposed to be changed from 60 feet to 45 feet. Corner parcel from 70 feet to 55 feet. A reverse corner from 135, or, wait a minute, I can't, this prints pretty, a reverse corner from 75 feet in the R2 zone to 55. Parcel depth from 135 to 55 as a minimum. I, that looks to me like you're setting yourself up for further subdivision of existing lots, or combining a couple of lots where you maybe only have two parcels under the current standard. You could end up with three or four. I guess my question is, I don't recall discussing any of this in our workshops, where we got into the specifics of parcel, because in our, to my understanding, my feeling is that these are the details that we get embroiled in. I mean, and I guess, I mean, I'm trying to get rationale. I mean, maybe they should be reduced, maybe they shouldn't. I, you know, but I don't recall any discussion on it, and I'd certainly like to hear from staff, from whoever, the consultant, or from whoever is making these decisions to, or proposals to put these in here. Likewise, you know, we have the, in the multi-family, in our gross land area per dwelling unit, we use a number of 1,750 feet. All it is is a number. Okay? So that you divide into the current parcel area to, as a first cut, to determine how many units can go on the parcel, provided they can meet the other development standards. That's the way we've been doing this since I can remember. I mean, not on, sitting on this commission, but from the early '70s for sure, when I first got involved with the properties. And that's completely eliminated. And I, you know, that first cut, or whatever, that we would apply, and I certainly don't discuss, remember discussing that at all. Because that's one of the vital, I mean, that's the, that's the vital number that, I mean, anybody who's doing anything in town, well, how many units can I get on this parcel? I mean, eight takes 1,750, and divide it into the parcel area, and that's going to give you the starting point for your minimum number of units. I mean, that's, or maximum number of units that you're going to be allowed to put on there, provided you can meet the other development standards with setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. So you might get a first cut, you might start off at five units, but by the time you're done, like the last project that we had, with all the, applying development standards, you can only do four. And now that's gone. And I think that's definitely worthy of discussion.
Which part's gone there, Art? I see the 1,750 on here.
Yeah, that's gone.
On the proposed, it's not there.
That's gone. That's what I'm trying to say. Unless you, unless you have this, you know, I, it's like having a red line version.
Got it, got it.
Okay? And so unless, we're going to sit here, and you're going to have to go this side by side and look at every one, and, you know, frankly...
Well, let's go back to the consultant and staff, and, I mean, what, where did those changes come from, what motivated?
Largely driven by changes in state law as to how you have to calculate density, or let people achieve density through your zoning code. So there needs, it's always been the law that you need to change the consistency between your general plan and your zoning code, but it hasn't really been enforced. There was new state law that really beefed up the Housing Accountability Act, that said if your general plan says you can allow up to 20 units per acre, you have to allow up to 20 units per acre. Or in the case of an R1 zone, if it's, I don't remember off the top of my head, but if you allow up to six or eight units per acre, your development standards have to allow somebody to achieve that density unless there are completely overwhelming circumstances like an easement on the property, or a biological constraint, or some other constraint. If your policy establishes a density, that's the density that the zoning needs to let somebody build. And so we are creating development standards that are achieving that consistency with the general plan. Yes, Commissioner DeBolt, some things are going to be different than they have been in the past.
Okay, let me, okay, let me comment on that comment just a little bit. I was on the general plan committee, and I do remember the discussion when we got into density and 30, and I think we were talking, I think, with a maximum of 30 units per acre, if I have that number correctly. And we were, and we were, we were looking at having fewer acres, you know, we wanted, with that 1,750 square feet, that density works out to about 23, about 23 or 24 units per acre. I don't, I don't have a calculator, we can figure it out.
It's under 25.
Okay, so, about 24.8. And we had discussions in the general plan to, let's, if we're going to be, quote, "consistent" on that, let's, then let's use that number and how it make the maximum 25, you know, 24, 25 acres, or units per acre. Okay? We were told by the consultant then, I don't think it was you, okay, whoever handled that. Well, no, we'll put a maximum in. Okay, we'll just put the maximum. That doesn't mean they get it, but that's, that'll just have it there for the, those situations where, you know, you can still go ahead and do this, but if you have larger parcels and you want to do more units per acre, you don't have to limit yourself to the 1,750. That might be more applicable in the apartment area, you know, where the lots are, you know, pretty much. But when we get into the bigger stuff, like we just had up here, and maybe we want to go higher or whatever, but it's a maximum, it's not something you're locked into, you don't have to, they don't get it. And that's how it was represented to us. Okay, now, now if that's not the case, then, then this is where we need to have the discussion. Because I'm of the opinion that the 1,750, and if that works out to 25, 24, 25 units per acre, as far as I'm concerned, that's the density that we need to be hanging our hat on, and if we're going to modify anything, then we modify the general plan to reflect whatever that number comports to, if we're going to keep that, keep that consistent. That's my opinion, okay?
One thing that I will add to that, at the time the general plan consultant was telling you that, the law wasn't being as forced as rigorously as it is for the Housing Accountability Act, and that law has come into place since you did your general plan, at least the new law that said you got to do it this way. If you were to take your density below 30 units per acre in the higher, in your R3 zone, I think you might be running into conflict with your housing element that sets a maximum density of 30 units per acre for housing that would be considered affordable housing. And so if you were to change it in your general plan, I think that might take you out of compliance with your housing element.
And who, and who came up with the 30 acres in the housing element, 30 units per acre in the housing element?
That was probably discussed as part of the general plan update. I'm going to get geeky on you for a minute, so I apologize, but when you're doing your housing element, you have to designate, you have to show that the city has adequate zoning, properties zoned adequately to make, to have, provide high-income housing, moderate-income housing, low-income housing, and very low-income housing. The state has said that for communities like Los Alamos, if you have a zone where you allow at least 30 units per acre, that's what we're going to call your default density. Essentially, anything that's at least 30 units per acre, you can claim could be developed with below-market rate housing. And so anything in your housing element that is shown as at least 30 units per acre, the city has said, we could accommodate below-market rate housing here. So it has to be at least 30 units per acre for that reason.
But that's the number that we came up with.
You, no, it's actually in the state law. You can't, some cities have it at 20 for more rural-type communities, but 30 is the default density established by law. Jose, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, well, to get the lower default density, like Laura said, it's rural, and I think, I'm trying to remember what the maximum density, or not the density, but the population of the city, if it's less than 25,000, I believe that's where you get the lower default, and if it's over 25,000, that's where the 30 dwelling units per acre keeps up.
Okay, so we're 12,000, we're 11,000.
But they, they also define it as a urban area, and you might be considered as an urban area, and so that's why you have this 30, it's frustrating, Commissioner DeBolt, I know.
Well, no, I understand. Just so we have all the information. And then regarding consistency, and I think I brought this up to Les, and I'll give it to you, the attorney as well, here's one, regarding consistency in our zone, with our zoning with the general plan. It's my understanding, as a charter city, zoning is one of the areas where we are allowed not to be consistent. Okay? And, and unless that law's changed, then, then I think we need to preserve that in our general plan, because I, that, you know, reinforce that we are, we are a charter city, and that consistency for charter cities is not, there's an exception in there. And we need to preserve that exception, and if we need to utilize that exception in what we're doing here, you know, I have no problem with 30 units per acre as represented as a maximum, as long as we have the ability to say no. And if that's, and it's been saying no, we're doing that because we have this consistency exemption as a charter city, then I think we need to preserve that and have that tool in the box. I don't have any problem with using 30 acres, 30 units per acre as a maximum number, as long as we, the commission and the elected officials, have the ability to, quote, in effect, be inconsistent on any given project, or on a project that we feel in our city is not appropriate. And I, you know, and...
I'm not, I don't want to put Michael on the spot here, but I do believe that the legislation that passed said, notwithstanding what we've said about charter cities don't require this consistency with regard to this density issue, that's not the case.
I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, my, my recollection is there has been some development with respect to, historically, the view that's been shared with respect to general plan consistency and the application of charter cities. I'll admit, I'm not prepared to provide a full analysis of that tonight, but I would be willing to take that under consideration, make sure you all have the information as soon as possible, so that we know exactly where we stand on that issue.
So the bottom line response to your question is, the changes were toward achieving general plan consistency, but it's this larger, but I do believe in this case of the density limit that charter cities are no longer exempt.
So how do we go from, what's the justification for a lot size, a lot width reduction of, from 60 to 45 feet? How do the, I want to know how these numbers are arrived at? Because we have, we have, the typical lot size around here is 49 and 1/2 feet, or 50 feet. Okay, it's our typical lot size. Okay? And so if we're going to take a typical lot, we put two, let's say we put two or three typical lots together, and we reduce that minimum lot, we reduce it to 45, in theory, we could be further subdividing our existing subdivisions. So you're setting that up for creating densities that are, that are...
The R1 zones would not be affected, it's the R2 zones where the...
I'm talking R2. I'm talking R2, and I don't know if you changed the R3s, I'll have to, I haven't had the time to get through that or the other ones yet. But I, I want to, I, this is the stuff, the devil's in the details. We, you know, we make changes, we do stuff like this, and all of a sudden, here's a, a project comes in that on the face of it, or whatever, we don't, we go, whoa, what's this? We should be able to apply this, and we find, oh, no, that got changed. Well, I don't remember discussing that. We changed that lot size to 45 feet? We do have a little parcel over here, it's about 30 feet, what's that one over here on, just in the back here, it's like a, not even a full half lot. I mean, you know where it's at there? On, next to where Wendy Gross lives?
Oh, yes, I know what you're talking about, on the alley, it's kind of turned toward...
Well, it's, it's like it's been cut on the width. I mean, we now make that a, great for them, they got a legal lot now. But...
Well, to get back to your question, the thinking on the R2 was, number one, reduce the lot size to help get towards the density that's allowed by the general plan, in this case, which is, I think it's 20 units per acre maximum. And so if the lot size is going down, should the dimensions go down as well? So that's what we did, is we took the dimensions down. There are some, though, that if you feel more comfortable, could stay at their current standard. For example, the lot, 135 is pretty deep for a lot depth, but if you wanted to keep the minimum lot width at 50 feet, I'm looking at, I'm comparing the current development standards to the proposed development standards, and for R2 today, the standards range from 50 to 60 feet, or, or actually, the width ranges from 50 to 75 feet, depending on whether it's a reverse corner lot or not. Those could be kept at their current rate, but we would probably recommend keeping the minimum lot depth at 100 feet rather than 135. I think you're absolutely correct. Somebody with these lower minimum lot sizes could figure out a way to combine lots and That, that could be the case.
I'm not prepared to do that. I'm not prepared, I personally wouldn't be prepared to make that decision. I mean, I, I would, I think I would like to have further, further information from the attorney regarding this notion of consistency. Are we, are we, are we as a charter city, do we still enjoy that exemption, notwithstanding the, whatever, whatever changes are made to try to ghettoize the cities to satisfy the influx of population that nobody wants to talk about? I mean, people have to live somewhere, I understand that, but, you know, we're a charter city, and we have a chance to protect that, I think we need to, we need to protect that. And I'm not, I mean, that's what we need to know before we go forward. I think, I think that's, that's almost a decision, almost, it's like it's got to be almost a decision of, maybe of the city council. You know, what is the city council's attitude on something like this? I mean, it's like, this ought to come from the top down to us, that we know we have a framework to work, to work in, that if we want to keep the density, you know, if we have to be 30 acres because of our, quote, "being considered a urban area rather than a suburb," which we are, we're a suburb, we're suburban community, so if we're, you know, let's find out where we stand. I mean, because then it certainly makes these discussions, I think, more fruitful. Otherwise, it's like, why do we, you know, I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. I am hearing your concern, and I'll make sure that we work up the analysis and get you all that information.
Yeah, I think we've kind of run into this a couple of times, where, didn't we have an applicant up here? And some people thought it was maybe too dense, but, but they were like, well, if you, if you shut us down because of density, we're within, you know, your zoning code, and we'll, you know, I think even before we talked about it, there was rumblings that they were prepared to, you know, take legal action. But, but that's kind of a different thing, because I think they were, you're talking about consistency between the general plan and the code.
I'm talking about, yes, but...
They were coming in saying, we're within your code.
We're within, we're within that maximum. Of course, and what the consultant's saying, she's saying that if they come in within the maximum, you got to give them that. And I'm going, no, I, I want to, I want to be less than 30 units per acre, I want to be closer to the 20, 24, 25.
Right.
Do we have, do we have, do we have that latitude? We're being told no here, because we have to be completely consistent. On the other hand, then, if we're a charter city and we have, we have this exemption or this protection, I would say as long as it's not abused, I'm not, you know, I, it's just that when you get that project like that, you want to have the latitude to say no, and know that you're on safe ground, and not, and not going to be, get caught up in a lot. Maybe you will, but that's where he has to do his thing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's obviously, this is an important point, and we'll get the information to you. The unfortunate side of it, from what I'm gathering, is when we were doing the general plan update, I won't say we were misinformed, but certainly, there, in my history of being involved with general plans and zoning codes, you want to ensure that there's the allowance that if you say your general plan density is X, that you at least allow for that opportunity for development to occur to that. What we currently have does not allow that. It's mathematically impossible with that 1,750 provision, per unit.
Well, then, and that's what I'm saying, maybe we need to, if that is the case, that we've created a, a mathematic... we've created a mathematical inconsistency that can never happen, well, I certainly wouldn't want that, because that, that's like, you know, that's a, you don't, you don't want that. So, there's two ways you go. You either increase, you reduce the number of 1750, you reduce that number to allow more units per acre, or you lower the, the 30 unit per acre number down to whatever that number is, or if that's, if that's the way we're going to...
Well, but then that creates the issue with the housing element, correct?
Well, but that, that's the number that we gave, correct? And that's, again, that 30 acres that we start with in the general plan flows through all the other documents that we create, okay? Apart from the state saying that there's a, you know, based on population and whether you're urban, you have to use this 30 acres, then apart from that, that's, that number 30 in the housing element is a byproduct or a product of what we started.
I think it's, it's probably the other way around. I'm thinking is that because you had to go to 30 for the housing element, that's what's reflected in the land use element.
It's, it's been 30 even before that housing element, it's been 30 for...
It's been 30 forever. I mean, the fact that we've been, maybe we've been operating under this mathematical inconsistent, well, we have been evidently for forever, forever and ever. Okay? And maybe we were lucky, we've dodged a bullet all along. But I can just tell you from, apart from being up here, I mean, I've built apartments, one, and will never do it again, but, but, I mean, I'm involved with people who do do development and that type of a thing, and 1750 was the number you make, and it just, and it works. I mean, the, to me, the area, we're built out, we're 99% built out. So, whatever we're doing here now is going to be going forward. And I think we have a pretty nice apartment community. I mean, some are old, some, you know, and do I want to, do I want to allow what they could get on there in 30 units per acre if they could do it? No. I don't want wall, I don't want wall-to-wall, three, four unit, or three, four-story high buildings. I mean, what a travis, I mean, you talk about ruining your city, that's, I don't want that. And we've operated under this 1750, and it's done well with us, and if we're inconsistent mathematically, then we need to bring that into consistency, I think, to preserve that density of about 23 or 24 units per acre rather than 30 units per acre. And we're all built out, we're all built out. There's, from a reality point of view, there's not going to be a whole, a whole lot of more development unless, we got about, what, three lots left in town that I know of?
Unless, obviously unless people redevelop.
Unless, unless somebody decides to tear down buildings and then, and then go up. So, my feeling would be is we bring them together, and that means, if we can legally, I mean, that's where the attorney's going to have to give us his, you know, if we can operate under that exception, then we do that.
And I think the one thing to still keep in mind, though, is even if the city attorney says you can operate under that exception, you still have the issue with the housing element, and the housing element says 30 units per acre, and if...
Well, then we'd have to change the housing element.
That's, that's...
That's another document that would have to be changed if we, because if that number was derived out of this table and out of this general plan, and we change the general plan in this document, then obviously the housing plan would have to, to be...
I'm...
Modified again to reflect what we've done here.
Although I'm thinking that your housing, housing law kind of locks you into 30 units per acre?
That I don't know.
So, we'll look into that as well. I think from, from staff standpoint, too, we want to be, we want to be clear and concise going forward. If it's, if it's 25 or 24.8 units per acre, we want to make sure that while we're talking with...
Right.
We're telling them that, because it's been, it's been misleading. I stepped into one when I got here, that came before you recently, where that was of question as to net versus gross, and what is, how does the 1750 work in, and it makes it difficult. It's challenging at staff's level, and it's challenging for the developer. A lot of folks just want to know, what is the maximum density I can build? What are the setbacks? What are the building heights? Straightforward, black and white.
Sure.
Tell us what it is so we can do our assessment and analysis and determine if we can make this work or not. And I think that's a key point for us going forward. We'll get the answers to you, we'll figure that out, and some of that's going to be a policy decision that, that you'll be recommending to council as to how we want to go forward with that. But from staff's level, at the end of the day, we just want to make sure it's clear and concise to the point, and we can ensure that everybody knows the rules going forward. And, and I think that's partly why you see the 1750 not there, is we, it says 30 units to the acre, so the direction, as I understand it, kind of coming in midstream here, the direction was, let's get everything set up for that consistency.
I understand, I understand that, but you weren't here when we did the, the general plan update, and you weren't here when you did, you know, Tom was here, and, and I distinctly remember those discussions, that this 30 units is a max. I mean, this is something that you can, you know, you, you have the authority with the CUP to say no to the, to the, you know...
And that is correct. Through a, through a discretionary permit like that, you do have that with justified reasons for it. But from the standpoint, as I think was mentioned earlier when Laura said, we've got to at least provide that opportunity for somebody to be able to, for a project to come forward to be considered at 30. And right now, you can't do that with the current zoning code.
I understand, I understand. If we have to bring it together, if we can bring it, bringing it together means you, you can eliminate the 1750, but make the density maximum 20, 23 or 24 units per acre, you've still got the same number then. I mean, it's just a different way of getting there. Correct? The two would be, then, then you would be, lower the 30 to 24, I don't have the calculator, you can do the math, 1750 into 43,560 will give you the units per acre.
Correct.
And then you can, if that becomes, quote, "the max number" instead of 30, then that becomes the max number. Assuming we don't run afoul of us being a urban versus suburban, or a population problem, and then if the housing element drives everything, which I find that hard to believe, that, you know, the, whoever control, in Sacramento says, you have to have a minimum of 30 units per acre on, you know, then, I don't, I think that the housing is driven by what's in our general plan in here, I believe. I might be wrong, but I...
So, okay, well, we will report back to you on the issue of charter city, we'll report back to you on housing law and the current provisions associated with that, and provide that for you to, to weigh in as to how you'd like to move forward.
I mean, that's for me, I don't know about the rest of you, but I, that's my take sitting here.
Well, I think this is a totally very valid discussion point, right? Because I think I'm, we're always concerned about density and overdevelopment in the city, I mean, it's, it's just one of those, it's just one of those things, right? I'm also concerned about consistency, right? Because I, I'm...
And I'm okay with that, too. I mean, I, I want consistency, too, but if we have, if we have, if we have the ability to be inconsistent because of our, on any given project, then I don't want to toss that out the window by tying our hands in the general plan, because the way you give up that, that exception is to have that in the general plan, that you will be consistent on, on all matters of zoning. And if that's in our general plan right now, then that needs to be changed. That's the, I mean, that's, that's my understanding of it.
Well, but it's kind of difficult to have a document like a general plan and have within it say, oh, but you don't have to be consistent.
I'm not, no, 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 no. I agree with you, if we were a general law city, but we're not, we're a charter city, and as a charter city, you have that. "The general plan is the basis for all local land use decisions. Zoning, except in most charter cities, subdivisions and public works can only be approved when they are consistent with the general plan. Charter cities are exempt from the requirement that zoning must be consistent with the general plan unless the charter city requires such consistency by its own charter or ordinance, or the city has a population of over 2 million."
Right, so that's, that's the question...
Which was written cover L.A.
...of the attorney.
Yeah, yeah, so, and it only applies to zoning, that's all it applies to. Beyond that, we've got to be consistent everywhere else. So, I'm just, I, you know...
Commissioner DeBolt, one other thing, because this isn't very helpful either, but there is legislation moving forward right now to require general plan consistency with zoning consistency in charter cities.
Fine, when that happens, then we revisit that, you know, but it could have, should have, maybe happened.
So, when you say that, that's pending legislation, what kind of timeframe are...
Within this, well, let's see, yeah, within this cycle, all the bills were just introduced or have to be introduced by the end of March.
There are a number of, housing's a hot topic right now, obviously, it's in the news, seems like all the time as of late, and I think that's why that was introduced. I think there's a handful of bills right now that address affordable housing and just ways to streamline housing projects being built. So, towards concerning to me, because even the Housing Accountability Act that just went into effect January of last year streamlined a lot of housing. There, there are provisions now that we have to outright allow certain housing projects if they're in proximity to transit.
Right.
And they're just outright permitted. So, there's, it's a continued push to...
So, then, if we brought it into consistency, I'll just give you an example, if we, if we brought it into consistency, let's just say by reducing the 30 to 24 and change, now we are consistent, so when the law passes requiring consistency, we have the numbers that we want. We're not, we're not at 30.
Well, but, but I mean, it sounds like there may be some downside to that, from coming off of that 30 number.
I would need to go back and look at your housing element to see what the housing element assumed for sites that would support affordable housing, and if the housing element says, these allow up to 30 units per acre, therefore, we are meeting our housing obligations. If you change that, then your housing element will no longer be in compliance with state law.
And we would have to modify that. We're going in a circle.
Yeah.
The, the, if there's something magical about 30 units per acre with the state, then we need to know that. Okay? If the state is putting a number out there of 30 units per acre, that this is the number that is a minimum for all housing elements, then obviously we have to be, and that's regardless of, that has nothing to do with any exception, I understand that. But if there is no number, if that number is derived from our general plan, because we put in this maximum of 30 units, and that, by putting that in our general plan, that flowed into our housing element, then if we change the general plan, then obviously we would have to change the housing element to reflect whatever change we make in the general plan. Unless the state has some fixation or, or there is this magic, this 30 units per acre that's sitting out there.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, it seems clear that we need to do some more homework on the 30 number, on the charter city number, and whether we have to be consistent with the general plan, and what's pending with, with state law, I mean, just all, all that kind of comes together to, that all needs to be vetted out.
I agree.
So, you can figure out.
I apologize that it's so convoluted, but...
Well, I think...
Hey, it's California! You know what we're doing.
This is a good conversation, right? Because our code was kind of convoluted before, and this is an effort to clean it up, but there's, there's other, yeah, it's California, right? That kind of sums it up right there.
I do have a question. Is there anything that we can get you prior to the next meeting that might help in terms of reviewing the tables?
Yeah, all this information.
Other, other than what we just talked about, is there anything else?
Right. I just had one other thing that I, that has come up before with the, in our apartment areas, we have alleys. We require that the alley width be a certain distance, and there are some properties that have not dedicated their, it's two and a half feet is the, is the number. So, some of these lots that, where they, they're going to build new, they're going to be required to do a two and a half foot dedication. Okay, in my opinion, all, all basis for development should be net of that, should be after that, not inclusive of that two and a half feet. That two and a half feet is the first thing given up, and then they, because they can't, they can't use...
Yes, it's not, it's not developable.
It's not developable. So, why allow, why let that extra two and a half foot width play into the calculation of units per acre or however we're arriving at this?
I think if I remember correctly, we looked into that issue, and I believe the draft language now clears that up, the gross versus net.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, our old code was a real challenge on the gross versus net. The language now is more definitive to where, just as you're mentioning, there's, there's a gross calculation that, that occurs, right? But if, if it wouldn't, it...
Or it's essentially, density is calculated...
It's going on the net number, not the gross.
On the net number, not including any dedications that are required.
Yes.
Right, exactly.
Whereas before, our code now, as it's written, it's very ambiguous in that regard.
Right.
So...
Well, historically, we have let them count the two and a half feet, historically, at least in the apartment area. I'm not going to speak for any other area, but, I mean, historically, that's been the way that we have done it. And...
Yeah, I, we told Tom and Les that we, it was curious that in a built-out city, that you'd be looking at gross.
Right.
That net is really the, is absolutely the norm in a built-out community. Any questions, any other questions about development standards for the residential zones?
I have to go through all this.
I have one that, and maybe it's in here now, but I know it wasn't, is that where you measure the height from?
Oh.
That came up, that came up in the past with a development I was involved with, and I'm not sure if that question was, is in there now. It was kind of like, well, it could be this, could be that, you know what I mean? It was...
It's from a curb.
We, I don't have that information in front of me, but absolutely, we've...
If we could look in, make sure it's there.
It was from the nearest curb.
Is it in there now?
Yeah, well, that's the way it was. I don't know if that changed it or not. I've got to check that.
But it's unequivocally clear, and we want to include a graphic, we haven't put all the graphics in yet, but we want to show how you measure building height. Commissioner DeBolt, other questions?
Well, that's all that I have right there. I, now that we have the red line version, I can, we can, I just was having a hard time trying to figure out what's changed, what was being changed, you know, in getting the, in getting the draft, and especially in the table. You know, was trying to figure out what's, what's not there. So, I mean, so, for the moment, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, why don't we go ahead and look at the commercial zones, then? Because I don't think we, we got to those at our prior, well, we did a little bit, because we talked about some of the, we talked a lot, actually, a lot about the percentage of office that could be allowed in the commercial zones and what the real intent was, but what we didn't get to was any of the development standards for the commercial zones. And so, I'm looking at page 221 of the original materials that we provided. And with regard to what has changed, let's go ahead and take a look at the materials that Tom provided to you. Oh, I did. I think, Jose, did you have a copy of the, the, not commercial, but the, the commercial development standards, or do we just have residential?
Yep.
I had one question, just a quick question. In the R1 zone, religious assembly is prohibited, and then if I remember reading the definition of religious assembly, it included housing for the clergy. So, if a church were to buy a house to use as a parsonage, and they put it in, you know, in an R1 area, is that, it's owned by the church to be used exclusively for their clergy, is that prohibited?
I would think not, because the fair, well, maybe we need to clarify in the definition, provided on the same site as the place of religious assembly.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah. They could absolutely do that, if they want to buy a house and put the parson in there or the minister in there, that would be fine.
Okay.
Because it's an R1 zone, it's an R1 property being used for an R1 use.
And I know some churches...
And I know some churches utilize, they set up like an apartment or something for, let's just say ministers that come in to speak temporarily for, they're there overnight, and they might have a, I'll call it an apartment for lack of a better word, but just a room that can be used for sleeping and for whatever, is that not included?
I guess the question would be, if it's a matter of ownership of the home, I think the intent here with this definition was to say, if you, if, like, if you have a church facility, or a religious facility, and on that grounds you have a residence, or residences for the clergy, that that's a part of, of a, that facility, that religious facility, I don't think it was intended, and we can, we'll look into this, it was not intended to say if, if a Cottonwood Church went out and bought a house in a neighborhood, and that house was intended to be for one of their pastoral staff, that that would be in conflict with the code, it's, I think the idea here was that, kind of reversed, that if you've got a church facility.
You don't want to have.
That within that church facility, you could have a residence for the clergy.
Right.
I think that was really the intent and purpose, to mix that versus prohibiting somebody from being able to, I mean, we have, obviously, we have pastoral staff living in homes all over.
How about the, how about the Catholic Church that has, the priest has his residence right on site, and the nuns there have their.
Correct, and that's what this is intended for, this language here is intended to say that's a part of that religious facility, so it's, it's within the context of that, it isn't necessarily trying to prevent the church, if they bought a house across the street in the residential neighborhood and put, the church held the home, but the priest lived there, that that would be in conflict, it's still a single-family home, the ownership would be under the church, but we need to find a way to.
Would there be any prohibition against Bible studies, and any, they bring people in for a home Bible study, stuff like that?
I don't think that we, you.
I mean, is that prohibited, if you have, in the R1 zone, you can't have any religious assembly, so does that, our, a home Bible study, they might have 10 or 15 people come in?
Whether it's clergy member or somebody else coming in for Bible study at my house, that's not a place for religious assembly, it's not, it's me at my house having friends over, whether we're talking about books, or the Bible, which is a book too, or.
Right, right, no, I just was referencing, well, I'll have to reread the definition, but.
Yeah, I see what you're after, I don't.
Because there was a bunch of, within, which is great, the definition is thorough, but it throws a, you know, there's a lot in there, but is it, if it's a prohibited use in the R1 zone, and then within the definition is?
I think we can change that by adding the word accessory in front of residence for the, for the clergy.
Okay, yeah.
Because it's then clearly not the primary use of the property.
Right.
All right, the development standards in the commercial industrial zones, we, actually, we did touch on those last time, because we talked about the fact that the setback, the front yard setback was proposed to be reduced in the PM zone, because it's at 50 feet now, and if it's on a major arterial, and so, that's where we ended, and so, what I'd like to know, if anybody has any comments on the town center mixed-use zone, this is a new zone, to implement the town center mixed-use area, and the uses that are regulated in the town center zone are a little bit different, and a little more restrictive than your general commercial zones, because the emphasis is on creating a pedestrian environment, and maybe not allowing uses like drive-throughs, or other things that aren't consistent with that pedestrian orientation, so the thought was to create uses, including things like offices, that have more of a, a street-level presence. And so, for example, I'm on page 227, medical and dental offices are prohibited on the ground floor, or anything that really doesn't create excitement, or something interesting for people who might be walking along the street.
So a dental office would be permitted?
Would not, would be permitted, but not on the ground floor.
Oh, I see.
Any questions, concerns about the uses or the approach? And Jose, with regard to mixed use, we've also allowed for it to be, they don't have to be integrated into one building, somebody could have a commercial building on the front, and a residential building behind.
Confirming that.
And Commissioner DeBolt, on the development standards, on page 230, I'm kind of jumping ahead here, this is also established at 30 units per acre, so we would want some feedback on whether or not that's an appropriate density, once we give you all the additional information, if it could go lower, would you want that lower, or is 30 units per acre appropriate in this pedestrian-type zone?
Going back to your comment, yeah, you're right, it allows both vertical mixed use and horizontal mixed use.
But it doesn't allow for residential without having commercial.
Commercial.
Right, they can be separated or horizontal, but.
My thrust on the, on the lower densities in the residential area.
Okay.
I don't know that, in the commercial, I can understand the need to intensify it a little bit.
Okay. Let me catch up with notes for just a sec.
Again, aren't we going to have inconsistency though, like, if we have 30 units per acre, and we have height limits, and, and no residential on the ground floor, or on the front edge, I'm assuming, then there won't be any way to get to 30?
The building height, and this is on page 230, can go up to 60 feet in this zone, so there's quite a bit of volume that you could put a building, or put units within?
Okay, so I just, this is just that consistency question, so, do you think it's attainable?
It's attainable, and a lot of it depends on the unit size as well, if somebody puts in 500 square foot units, 750 square foot units, you can put more units within a building on the floor.
Okay.
Well, when you talk about units per acre, are we talking residential?
Yes.
That's a residential term.
Yes.
All right, so not units, I think, I'm thinking of, you know, each space as a unit, I mean.
Yeah, well, this is mixed use, right, so if you've got residential, or you've got business use on the, on the ground floor, and then there could be apartments, or lofts, or whatever, above, right?
So the, the, okay, so the units per acre in that instance pertains, still pertains only to the residential.
Correct.
Not to the.
Right, the floor ratio is, would be the guide for the non-residential component.
Which is that 2.0?
So there's pretty good allowance for development to occur in the town center mixed-use zone, with the 60-foot height limit, the, the thing that's probably more than anything going to drive how they develop those is what the parking requirements are, and how they meet the parking, and there's nothing that would prohibit anybody from doing underground parking, structured parking, parking lifts, mechanical lifts, if somebody wanted to put lifts in a parking garage, to essentially get more cars per.
I just don't see any of that ever happening.
Pardon?
Yeah, I just don't see a lot of that happening, but that's 50 years down the road, we'll all be gone.
And there is no rear setback required unless it abuts a residential zone, so there's a 15-foot setback requirement to provide a buffer between the town center mixed-use and any residences that might be behind it.
And going back to what Chairman just mentioned regarding the, I think that's a valid question, does that set up the inconsistency, or is this, you know, I mean, and if that's one where we would utilize the exception that we have as a charter city, if that's allowed?
I think you're okay with the development standards, with the 60 feet and the.
So the consistency area will apply to, the consistency requirement will apply to the, the zone, the particular zone, and the development standards within a particular zone, I mean.
Well, we're vetting whether there is a requirement for consistency, but it's not an issue here, because the development standards we're laying out allow for consistency.
But our saying is if you lower the whole thing, though, if you lower the whole, all the numbers, is this going to have, this is going to be a problem?
But the general plan specifically calls out the mixed use as 30 dwelling units per acre, and 2.0 FAR.
All right, so, all right, okay.
Unless you lower those, then.
No, I understand, okay, it's just.
Yeah, so this is, this is good, this is consistent.
This is good and clean, this is easy.
Good, good, good.
Okay.
And it sounds like everybody's still happy with the vision for the town center mixed-use area.
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good. On page 231, I just wanted to point out that recognizing the mixed-use nature of the town center mixed-use zone, there are proposed standards that are included to make sure that there aren't conflicts between the types of uses, so that when the commission's reviewing anything, you're not, and believe me, this happened in Burbank, but I'm going to give you this as an example of what not to, what not to do, for a mixed-use project, they had a nightclub below a senior housing project, that's, so the standards are, somebody said, well, they're probably all deaf anyway, so it doesn't matter, but those are the types of things that you want to avoid in doing a mixed-use development, and so there's standards to address those types of potential incompatibilities. Other than that, the zones are pretty straightforward, there's not much new in the overlay zones or the special-purpose zones, because we, there wasn't much in the general plan to achieve with consistency there, so, and that would be your, that starts on page 234. Something that I want to mention again, just to give you a heads-up, with regard to wireless communications facilities, the, and we haven't gone over all of this with you yet, but there will be a new ordinance that the city attorney is writing to deal with the small cells that are really the state-of-the-art that's coming forward, and they cannot be regulated in the same way as you historically have regulated cell towers, or dishes in people's yards, or on top of commercial businesses, it's going to be regulated entirely differently.
Is that because of a mandate from the?
That the FCC.
It's a new general order from the FCC regarding the placement of small wireless facilities in the public right of way and on public property.
I thought we already did something on that.
We have, we've started on that, and there's been a draft, there's some draft language that Michael's brought forward, it's on my desk for review, and once we're through that, we'll be prepared to bring it forward for your consideration, but it's in line with, two or three months ago, we had a workshop, if you will, with several of the cell providers in attendance, and for, a number of factors came into play that brought about what Michael's drafted up for us, and obviously, the key issue here is consistency with the new federal provisions, but it really sounds like it's going to be in line with a lot of what we've been talking about, and what you all have given feedback on as finding acceptable with regards to the design and aesthetics from the last tower that came, or not tower, but antenna system that came before you.
Right.
But we're still going through that, and you'll, you'll have something before you for it.
And are those, are those going to continue to come to the commission, or are those going to be approvable at staff level, based on?
I don't want to go too deep into the discussion, because we haven't agendized a full discussion on that item, but that is a consideration point to be made, traditionally, or at least historically in this city, we've brought those installations forward just under our general wireless provisions, which requires planning commission review and a CUP.
Okay.
Which is problematic in a sense, because of the timelines, we're.
Well, I was just looking at this, right, because it says subject to development permit minor, right, because it says permitted, so I guess that's where that question was coming from.
I see, yeah, so we'll have the updated draft, that will also discuss sort of the, our proposed method of permitting and entitling those types of installations, and depending on the direction we receive on that effort, we'll obviously have to work together to make sure that what we're putting forth from my office mirrors and complements the more substantive or more extensive overhaul of the zoning code generally that we're discussing tonight and working on.
Okay.
Do those towers, or those units, is it just cell service, or is, are there other, is there like Wi-Fi in there, or are there, are there multiple, multiple different types of transmissions that are occurring?
I should know, but I can't tell you definitively.
Yes, your cable service as well comes through that.
Cable, okay, the only reason I ask, I read an article.
I know, there's cellular, and then there's like mobile data, kind of different, different things.
The system is really more data than phone service any longer.
Right.
It used to be, obviously, the primary objective was all for it to be cellular-focused, but, you know, how, how many times do we make phone calls now versus everything else that's data-related, so that's.
Well, and you can make phone calls over data, right?
Right, exactly, now, now that's the case too with Wi-Fi, you're making phone calls that way, but the bottom line is, there's been such a transformation in the last few years, and this technology's changed at such a rapid pace, but the data issue is the biggest problem, and now to add to it, the new 5G process, which we heard about when we had that workshop, is, adds a whole new element to it, and that's why there's even a strong push on these small cell antennas, because of the direct line of sight needed, and there's such a small coverage area per antenna.
Yeah.
And so, what we're going to end up finding out is that many of our, probably our streetlights, the vast majority of our streetlights will have very small antennas associated with them, as a way to get a very good thorough coverage, so high, improved coverage, but also the ability for them to transmit much more data, because our data usage continues to rapidly go up, year after year, as the technology continues to advance.
Right.
So really, it's a data distribution setup.
And communications as well, for example, for driverless cars, being able to communicate with these little antenna that are going to, that would be on top of the streetlights, sides of buildings.
What's your question, I mean, what's?
Well, I just read an article today, I'm trying, I was trying to find where I read it, which side I was on, something about higher, three or four kids have either been diagnosed with cancer, with a tower, it had to do with, not the regular cell towers, but it had to do with the combination of Wi-Fi multiple, and they, you know, the schools are putting the towers there, right, and, or putting the equipment there, and I guess in this one area, or whatever, there's been, I guess.
Multiple cancer?
Multiple, three, yeah, yeah, and, and they're calling it environmental, I mean, or whatever the, I couldn't, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's going to be interesting to see, but it's everywhere.
Oh, no, I know that, I know that.
You're anywhere, and you, like, this watch has GPS in it, and I turn it on, and it connects, and like, you know, takes like 15 seconds, I could be inside, and it connects, right, I mean, that's all.
You have a little glow on the side of your head right now.
But I also don't know that there's any, I don't know, I heard a story on the radio or something the other day, where they said that you cannot not allow that stuff because of health concerns, because there's no.
There's a clear federal preemption that says local municipalities, when making zoning determinations, cannot look at any alleged health concerns, as long as the FCC guidelines for health, radio frequency emissions are met.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for you this evening, we don't have any new materials to bring forward, but just to lay out what we need to do, we still have a couple of sections that we'd like to talk to you with in depth, they're on my desk to review, and so, Les, it's Article 3, and we need, I don't think we have enough time to notice a study session for your next planning commission meeting.
That's on the 27th, is that right? That's on the 27th, is that right? Yeah. We, we could, but we, yeah, I mean, it's, it's possible. Uh, study sessions don't require as much, uh, notice as, as a regular meeting.
Yeah, we're, we're fine. We, we, the, what we could do, if, assuming whether it works on your schedule, what we could do is what we've done the last two meetings now is do a study session at 6:00 on your, prior to your next scheduled meeting on 27.
Do we, what's, what's on the, do you know what's going to be on the agenda for the next meeting?
Maybe heavy agenda, I mean?
We have...
Two CUPs, just short, and one, uh, for extended hours, and one for, um, uh, expanding a, a gym.
Okay, I, and my question's because I, having it at 6:00 with a hard stop at 7:00, you know, it's kind of doesn't give us a great amount of time to go over, because this, maybe it'll take less time, but maybe it would take more, right? So would it be better to tack that on to the, the end of that meeting, so that it's a little more open-ended?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a challenge on either, either side.
I don't know. I mean, I'm just throwing that out. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel about it.
Well, we can come early, see how far we get, and then see how quickly the main meeting ends up, and if we can stay beyond that, continue the...
Well, but then we're, we're keeping the consults and everybody. I, I don't know. I, I'm just throwing it out.
I, I don't know, procedurally, can, can you do that? If you have a study session, then continue it into the regular meeting?
After the meeting.
After the meeting.
Are we paying it by the hour's limit there?
We'll go have dinner while you're...
Yeah, I, I, what I would suggest is we, we do the 6:00 study session, see how we do with that, and if we need to continue it on afterwards. The, the challenge is we don't know how long or short those two items are going to be.
Sure.
We're anticipating that they'll be fairly short, but we don't know. There could be, um, concerns raised by the, you know, by residents or...
Oh, I get it, I get it. I'm just, I'm just trying to give us the opportunity to have it. If, I'm totally fine with starting at 6:00, and as long as we have the opportunity to continue it if we want or need to, um, to, you know, keep it going after the, the meeting.
And I've been talking with the city attorney, we're going to work diligently over the next few days to gather all of the information regarding charter city, the, the housing law provisions, et cetera, and get that to you right away. We, we'll try.
Okay.
We'll have that out to you as soon as we can, next week, well in advance of the meeting, so you have a chance to look at that. Also, as you're going through the information, if there's anything you need, if you, please let us know as soon as possible, so that we can furnish that to you and to your colleagues. We really appreciate that.
I didn't mean to do that. I, I just started, I've been very, so I've just started to look at it, and that's, look at, from...
Well, we appreciate that. That, getting that feedback helped us. Unfortunately, we didn't get it to you, you know, sooner, early to help make a significant difference tonight, but we certainly want to get that feedback as we're venturing forward, and please feel free to call, email, text us, whatever, yell at us, whatever. We're here for.
And I, and I'm thinking the materials that we're bringing forward, um, include parking and signage, so we might want to, want to break that up in some manner.
That's going to take a little bit of time. The signage may not be too difficult, meaning that a lot of the signage changes are really relevant to, to federal provisions that we're, we're, it's needed. We're, we're not, we're not, we're inconsistent with, with the, uh, case law and some, some key issues there. Uh, this will bring us back into that, but on the parking side, that's probably something in itself that's going to take some time. We want to make sure there, there's a chance to explain it to you, have a chance to, um, have that in advance, we can explain it to you, and then discuss it with you, because you just went through a lot of work on that, and though you were at, you asked us to take a look at it and respond back, we want to make sure there's plenty of time given to, uh, to dialogue about that. So we may or may not, I, I doubt if we're going to be able to get through all of that on the 27th, but, uh, what we'd like to do is continue what's in front of you, getting that, uh, hopefully put to rest, or, or whatever the direction is from the commission, and then move on to these other items. So we will move forward with the 27th at 6:00 for your study session and, and go from there.
And please look at your city emails for the, uh, the next packet that we're going to send you for that study session. So, take a look at that.
Are you going paperless?
Uh, well, we, we will not go paperless. It will be part of that, but please do look at the, the city email, because we, we want to confirm before every meeting that really everyone's going to be there, so, yeah.
Okay, anything else from staff, or anybody up here? No? All right, your turn.